Because this is an official, as an official special session of the commission, we'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the role of the commission and we'll begin.
A special session is being held on Thursday, December 18th, 2014, at 5:00 PM in the 5th floor conference room for legislative update with Wyandotte County delegation. Roll call. McKeonan?
Here.
Muggia?
Here.
Maddox? Kane? Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Holland?
Here. All right, we want to thank everyone for being here today. This is the first of what I hope to be an annual meeting with the Wyandotte County Legislative Delegation to Topeka with the commission. We, every year, put together our, with the help of Mike Taylor, and he's going to go over part of it, or all of it, but we put together our legislative agenda, and one of the things that I'm wanting to do is to make sure we're improving communication with the group and to make sure we just even know each other, because you know, we know the folks who are in our own districts, our own areas, but we don't necessarily have the relationship with everyone, so when there are issues in Topeka, or when there are issues locally, we can reach out to one another and just improve that work together. And on the, with an eye to number six on the agenda, which is moving forward, we're going to be looking for some ideas at the end of the meeting in terms of how we continue this dialogue and in what ways are helpful. The world of the Kansas Legislature is so different in terms of meeting in four months, that it's just a different rhythm than the commission, so just making sure we understand that and how we can be most helpful in being in communication. But I'm delighted that everyone came today and really appreciate that. Before we get started with introductions, I do want to say we have two folks in the audience tonight that I'd like to recognize, Mary Ann Flunder with the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and Sheriff Ash, who's sheriff, and, as his name implies, and also a board member of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, so thank you both for being here tonight. So we, what a privilege in Wyandotte County to have the minority leader for the House and the assistant minority leader for the House, both from Wyandotte County, and I think that speaks volumes to how the state looks to Wyandotte County for leadership in this area, and we're delighted to have, to have that leadership here with Tom Burrows as the minority leader and Louis Ruiz as the assistant minority leader. What I want to do is go around and have each person just introduce themselves, what district you represent, and then if Stan Frounfelter, who's the chair of the delegation, would like to say anything, it's not required, but it's optional, but anyway, we'll just start around with introductions.
Hal Walker, 2nd District, Ed Large Unified Commission.
Hello, Pam Curtis, and I represent the 32nd House District, and that district is river to river, State Avenue to 18th Street, but it bumps over there and places to as far as 30th Street.
Jan Winkler, Philbrook, I am in the 8th District, and it cuts down right through the center of the city. It goes river to river and meanders around, as we know, from 38th to about 80 something, depending on where you are, north and south.
I'm Robert Kenderson, 35th District. It starts at 1st Street, it goes all the way to 67th and Leavenworth Road and everything north of Georgia.
Good evening, my name is Gail Townsend, I am commissioner for the 1st District in the Unified Government. The boundaries of that district are east to the river, north to the river, generally speaking, the southern boundary is parallel, and then there is a jagged western border, which I share with Commissioner Philbrook. The most western street I can recall is about 61st, but if someone calls out that way, I'll look at the map and help them anyway, because we are the Unified Government, but then let them know. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here with the state legislators and of course, my brothers and sisters commissioners, thank you.
Well, good evening, Representative Tom Burrows, and Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I represent the south-central part of Wyandotte County, Lake Quavira area, all the way west to Edwardsville and Bonner Springs area, the NASCAR Motor Speedway, the Legends is the furthest point north in my district, so we look forward to this dialogue we're going to have this evening.
And Mark Holland, Mayor of the Unified Government.
I'm Doug Bach, I'm the county administrator for the Unified Government.
Representative Stan Frounfelter, 37th District. I represent most of Turner and part of Argentine, and I would like to thank the mayor and commissioners for allowing us to meet with you tonight. This is long overdue, and I think, after meeting with the mayor the other day, and some things were going over, I think this is a good starting point and to carry over from there, because there's a lot of items when it comes up we need your input on, and we've lost that over the time that I've been there, and I'm very excited about going forward from now, and after this point in time, there'll be a new chair that will come in one week, and that should be Kathy Wolf-Moore, and I'll let her take over from there. Thank you.
Brian McKeonan, Unified Government, 2nd District, so right here where we're sitting, from State Line on the east to 18th Street on the west, and from State Avenue down to the Kansas River.
Anne Muggia, I'm the 3rd District for the Unified Government Commission, and it encompasses all of Rosedale, home of KU Med Center, KU Hospital, and half of Argentine.
I'm Mike Taylor, I'm the Public Relations Director and lobbyist, and you're going to hear a lot from me, so I'll stop there.
My name is Kathy Wolf-Moore, I'm the state rep from the 36th District, which is generally 67th Street West, includes all of Piper, and I don't go any south of state, and I would just like to thank you, Mayor and Doug. I've had the occasion to call quite a few of your staff over the last couple of years to get legislative issues answered, and they've all been amazingly helpful, so thank you very much.
Hello, Jim Walters, District 7, Commissioner for the Unified Government. That district is the southwest quadrant of Wyandotte County, all of Edwardsville, all of Bonner Springs, and south of Parallel. Like Tom, it includes the Speedway, the Slitter Bond property, the Legends, all what we call the fun bits of the county out there. And I want to thank all the state representatives for being here this evening, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Louis Ruiz, I represent the 31st District, which encompasses all of Rosedale, I come north of the river and then west to parts of Argentine, and I go south and go back beyond Highland Crest, so after redistricting, I picked up a lot of different types of neighborhoods and a lot of family in Argentine that I picked up as well. Very much a pleasure to be here this evening. The dialogue we're going to have this evening, I've been looking forward to some time, because there's issues that overlap that I think need to be discussed, especially after last year's, some of the good legislation, some of the not-so-good legislation that we passed that encompassed home rule, and look forward to a good discussion, thank you.
Angelo Markley, I'm Unified Government Commissioner for District 6, which encompasses Turner and the half of Argentine that is not in Commissioners' Muggia's district area, so I am appreciative, by the way, of this vintage microphone, I feel a little special for having been gifted with that. I feel like I should be on a 1960's radio show or something.
You're like Don Imus.
Mr. Frounfelter, would you like to make any comments as the chair of the delegation?
No, thank you, other than thank you very much for inviting us, and I look forward to future discussions from here.
Thank you. We're going to go through, Mike, well, you're going to do some introduction of some staff, I'm going to have Doug Bach introduce some staff, and then I'll have one more comment, and we'll turn it over to Mike Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, as you're here and a few of you, have an opportunity to meet some other staff members that are here, but I just want to make sure and note them. I have two assistant county administrators that are sitting right back here, it's Gordon Criswell and Joe Connor, our chief legal counsel is Jody Boding, our chief financial officer, Lou, if you'll wave your hand back there, Lou Levin, and our chief budget op manager is Reginald Lindsay, and our deputy chief attorney is Ken Moore. Mayor's chief of staff is sitting back there with them too, Marie Mahoney. I think that's our staff, and Emmerick Cross is also the commission liaison, as well as Jason Banks, who's on the mayor's staff as well, it's here.
Thank you. One of the things, Mike Taylor, who you all know in Topeka, we all, he's really the liaison for the Legislative Delegation to the UG, works with you in Topeka, and helps run traps on a number of issues that come up. He's going to do a presentation, one of the things that I want to say out front, is some of his news is bad news in terms of what's been happening over the last several years, I want to, I want to note with the caveat, that the Wyandotte County delegation has worked hard to help prevent some of the difficult or bad legislation that's happened in Topeka, and when we've been hit hard financially, it's not because of our Wyandotte County delegation. Our Wyandotte County delegation has worked diligently for decades to protect the interests of the Unified Government and our community and our citizens, and really appreciate that, so as, I think it is relevant to look at some of the hits that we've taken, but I want to make sure that there's, that we're very clear, we view this team as a partnership, and you guys have been great in this, and we do not hold the Wyandotte County delegation responsible for the loss of revenue that we've experienced, but one of the things I want to, we all know it, but I want to educate the public, and one of the nice things about these public meetings being on television is it's an opportunity to educate the public about some of the challenges in Topeka, because people hear, you know, things are happening in Topeka, there's budget cuts, this, that, and the other. My hope is, is that Mike's presentation helps make that relevant and real to the citizens of Wyandotte County as they see what we're talking about. But anyway, I just wanted to reiterate before he got started, this bad news is not a reflection on our delegation, so Mike, with that.
Thank you. Yes, I want to start with a little bit of an overview of the landscape that we'll be facing in Topeka. The budget will be the major issue. $6.4 billion budget for 2015, revenues falling about 280 million short of meeting expenses. Revenues are projected to fall 648 million dollars short for fiscal 2016, and with those budget reductions, that's leaving a zero-ending balance. So the governor's proposed 280 million dollars in cuts and transfers, 4% budget reductions to all state agencies, he's proposing reducing capers contributions for state employees and teachers by almost 41 million, and he's transferring almost 96 million from the state highway fund. Now, under that, he said that projects in 2015 and 2016 will still be completed, but keep in mind, it's a 10-year transportation plan, so the concern that we would have is what happens to projects like the later, the latter phases of the K-7 and I-70 project, for example, when we get into 17 and 18. So what are some of the possible solutions? Well, deeper cuts to budgets, eliminate services, one that we're concerned with and have seen kind of become a precedent is shifting more work and cost burden to local governments. There is the option of slowing or reversing the income tax cuts, I just put that up as an idea, I don't think it's going to happen, but it would be an option. Another thing I've talked to some core colleagues about is eliminating sales tax exemptions. Just as a point, there are, we're now into the alphabet three times over with numbered or lettered sales tax exemptions. We exempt every year in Kansas $4 billion in sales taxes. So if they wanted to eliminate sales tax exemptions, we'd have $4 billion right off the bat. Again, very politically charged issue, and I don't know it'll happen, but it's a possibility. There's also been some small discussion about changing the way agricultural land is taxed. Again, I think that probably doesn't stand a lot of a chance, but it's an idea that's out there as a possibility. Wanted to show you a little bit with the Unified Government's budget, this is expenditures for the Unified Government for our 2015 budget, which will start January 1st, we're on a calendar fiscal year. You can see, public safety and the justice system is 47% of our budget, public works 21%, bond and interest fund is 13, community services, which everything from committee develop, development on down is 11%, and then administration, 7%. Where does that money come from? 27% of it from property taxes, 17% from charge for services, 16% is sales tax, 14% is franchise taxes, such as on cable, telephone, 11% other taxes, and then 3% from fees and fines. So we want to review, as the mayor talked about, a little bit of the financial hits we've taken over the past several years, and show you, just to give you some kind of an idea, you all remember when we've had to cut budgets, we furloughed employees, this is part of the reason that happened, I mean certainly the recession had a lot to do with it, but here's some other reasons, and this one, it just passed this year, elimination of the mortgage registration fee, which had been a traditional county fee since 1925, it will cost the UG an estimated 500,000 in 2015, and by the time that's all phased in, we'll be losing about 1.8 million dollars a year. The repeal of the machinery and equipment tax, that's cost us since 2006, when it entered into effect, about 10 million dollars annually, in actual revenues, we've lost 130 million dollars in assessed value. And I want to stop and point out here that in 2006 and last year, every member of the Wyandotte County delegation voted against doing these things, so stood up for the community, and said, "We don't want to repeal the machine equipment tax," knowing the financial hit, Wyandotte County was hit harder than any other county in the state, largely because we're so heavy industrial and manufacturing.
And how did the slider work out?
Right, the slider, there was a plan put in place to help mitigate the losses, where the state would actually help reimburse on a sliding scale some of that money, and I think we got one payment, maybe two payments out of seven years of payments we were supposed to get, so we kind of had to go it on our own after that.
It's the name slider.
Yes, the name slider, yeah, and it slid right out of there pretty quick, so. Something that happened just this year, which we'll see down the road the effects of, and this was put in a conference committee report in the wee hours, in the very final days, reduction of delinquent tax interest rate. The way it works is it's fed, it's set by the state statutorily using federal numbers, and then a 2% was added. Well, what happened was they reduced that by 2%, so this year, for example, delinquent taxes paid, the interest on those delinquent payments would have been 6%, or were 6%, had this law been in effect then, 4%. We estimate that'll cost us about 300,000 annually in penalty interest, and we think it will also encourage non-payment of taxes. I mean, when you can borrow money from your local government cheaper than you can borrow from a bank, why wouldn't you? We will, and we'll talk about it later, going to be bringing this issue up as one of our legislative issues. Suspension of the Local Admonorum Tax Reduction Fund, now this happened back in 2003, and it's just never been, it's still on the books, but it's made as an annual appropriation, and the legislature chooses to never appropriate the money. We've lost since 2003 roughly 3 million dollars annually, so the cumulative loss is now about 36 million dollars. And there's city-county revenue sharing as well, which, which I talk about in one of the sheets here, that was stopped in 2003 as well, and we were getting a couple million dollars a year from that. So one of our, our number one overarching priority for the Unified Government, it's been this for several years, is protecting local government revenues. The legislature should not continue solving its budget shortfalls by taking revenues belonging to or legally obligated to city and county governments. The legislature should reject placing more the burden for funding vital services on local taxpayers, and we see that happening in kind of insidious ways sometimes, I'll give you one just brief example of what happened, when the computer system for motor vehicles was redone. Yes, there were some glitches in the software, but a bigger issue that we faced was the paradigm, the way they designed that software, the title work that was done primarily at the state level was shifted to all the county treasury offices. We, that year, had to hire four new people at a cost of 200 and some thousand, we've since had to add even more, so it shifted the work down to us at the county level, that we've now had to incur costs hiring people to help handle that work that the state used to do, one example. Some of the funds that we're concerned about, and there's, again, you have a handout sheet that details more of those, but local alcoholic liquor funds, special city-county highway fund, motor fuel taxes, community health funding, and community corrections funding, those are all things that I'm concerned about being cut, or even in some cases, maybe even eliminated. And the handout sheet that you have, where it talks about local government funding, it details by department and function how much money we get allocated through the state of Kansas, local government funds allocated to us through the state, and as you'll see for our 2015 budget, that totals 19.5 million dollars, for everything from domestic violence prevention to juvenile justice programs to public works, the biggest one is the city, county, street, and highway fund, 6.6 million dollars. So if that comes on the chopping block, or major reductions, what that does, that's a direct effect on us being able to fix streets. So our other legislative priorities, and again, I put that, you got the entire legislative program, a lot of that's platform issues that are kind of the same from year to year, these are priorities that we're going to be trying for this year. Abandoned housing, you've all heard about this, Representative Frounfelter has worked on this for a number of years. The goal of the legislation is to streamline and expedite the process for local governments and neighborhood organizations to deal with the growing blight of abandoned nuisance and foreclosed housing. It was a tough fight, we actually got it past the House two sessions ago, and came really close this past year to getting it through the Senate in a conference committee report. Since then, we have engaged more so the League of Kansas Municipalities, and what we discovered was this isn't just a problem here, or in Wichita, or in Topeka, there are towns of 500 people that have 50 or 60 abandoned homes. Representative Frounfelter and I did a session at the League of Municipalities Conference. We had people four and five deep around the table, because there was so much interest in this, so I think we actually may get some real traction. There were hearings this summer on it at the local government interim committee, we actually took a lot of members of the committee, loaded them up in vans, and drove them around Topeka, and showed them a couple of examples of what we're talking about, and so I think the problem, I think, is they've really been made aware, now it's just a matter of what's the actual solution to it, but I think, I feel really positive about it. City elections, also hearings this summer on that, there's been a push, three years in a row now, to move city and school board elections from the spring to the fall, and couple them up with the national and state elections. And said in that, although it's the intent, is to move toward making those elections partisan as well. Right now, school, all over the state, school boards and city councils run as non-partisan positions. There is a push to try to make those partisan, so you'd have to run as a D or an R on those ballots. Every city and every city and county local government organization, state have fought that and opposed it, the proponents of it say that it's to try to increase voter turnout, but a lot of the hearings that we had this summer, where they brought in experts from other states and from national congress state legislatures, have said that what they've seen in other states where those are combined, when you have a huge ballot, say president, governor, senate, congress, legislature, dog catcher, and then you finally get to city council, District 3, or school board, you know, District 2, nobody's voting, they've gotten worn out, and so there's a, they've documented a huge drop-off on those down-ballot races. So we don't think it would necessarily increase voter turnout for local elections, and we think, in fact, it would probably make the issues less well-known, because think about this past election with a gubernatorial race, a really high-profile senate race, are you really going to be paying as much attention to a district commission race? Probably not. So that's one of the reasons we're opposing that, but I think it'll again be a fight. Law enforcement mutual aid is, it would allow law enforcement agencies to work cooperatively with their counterparts in adjoining states during critical incidents. All of the law enforcement agencies in the Kansas City area, this would affect nine counties on both sides of the state line, the state of Missouri passed this law last year, and it allows, when a critical incident is called, whoever the command is on that could call in other departments, and they could automatically respond with assets, equipment, personnel. Right now, they're not allowed to cross the jurisdictional lines, and one example, the best one I've heard of how this would help is, if you remember a few years ago, there was a shooter at the Ward Parkway Mall in Missouri. Well, the first officers on the scene were from Leewood, Kansas, but the Ward Parkway Mall's in Missouri, they would not, they couldn't do anything. Kansas City, Missouri police got there pretty quickly, and they were able to take down the shooter before he shot anyone else. This would have allowed those Leewood officers to have responded and actually been able to take action, and not face all kinds of lawsuits and jurisdictional problems. We think it's a really positive law, and we've gotten support from the League of Municipalities, even the Greater Kansas City Chamber is supporting this, because they see it as a common sense kind of thing, so we'll be pushing that. A critical one for us, and actually for all over the state, we'll be pushing, and I think it may well be a losing battle, but we're going to find it anyway, is Medicaid expansion. Expanding Medicaid in Kansas is critical for our county, our residents, but it's also an interesting issue in terms of rural and urban working together, and we've been trying to forge some coalitions there, the Kansas Hospital Association, I think, is going to make, and you can feel free to talk about this when we get to the discussion point, it's going to make, I think, a bigger push, but it's not just KU Hospital in our community and the kind of demographic, the residents that we have who would greatly benefit from it, it's small rural hospitals out in western Kansas who may very well have to close their doors, because they're not getting reimbursed for providing the treatment. So we've been trying to work for kind of a rural-urban fit there, now, I will tell you that majority of the legislature, and certainly the governor, are opposing this, so it could be a fight, but we're going to fight it anyway. Urban Opportunity Zones is another one that we'll watch, this is actually a proposal from the governor, announced right before the election here in KCK, it's modeled a lot after the Rural Opportunity Zones, which he put into place a few years ago, and it's interesting, when that proposal first came out, I talked with his staff and Nick Jordan and some others about doing urban opportunity zones, and they, they liked the idea, but felt like it was too much to put into one piece of legislation all at once. Well, now we've expanded the rural zones to almost every county in Kansas, so I think it's time that they're going to start as a pilot project, is what they're proposing in three KCK zip codes, and then they hope to maybe expand it to Topeka and Wichita, so it could be a way to help rebuild some urban neighborhoods, you know, maybe a block with some new storefronts, or that kind of thing, so we're going to be, we don't know all the details of it yet, but we're going to be supporting that. all the details of it yet, but we're gonna be supporting that as well. So, those are kind of our priority issues. Couple of other issues I won't spend a lot of time on, but this is one that was suggested to us through our, our finance department. Unclaimed checks. You know, we have thousands of checks where we've written, maybe it's to somebody's commissary fund from the jail, or it's some other person who got some kind of, they never cashed the check. We've got over 1,000 checks that are worth less than $5 apiece. So, we have to track those, we have to account for them every year, and then, and after three years, they have to be sent to the state treasurer, put in the state's account. So, what we're suggesting is a de minimis or minimum amount. So, let's say $20. If, if a check is worth less than $20, and it's not been cashed after a year or two years, it just goes away. We put it back in the general fund, and we don't have to track it and spend all that expense in processing it. The other one I mentioned earlier is delinquent tax interest rate. We're gonna make a push to try to raise that back to where it was. I don't think we'll get probably a, necessarily a welcome response to that, but I've got meetings in the next week or two with Marvin Kleb, who's the new chair of the tax committee, and we'll see what he, what he says about it. And then one we're gonna be watching, and some of you will remember this surfaced last year, I know Representative Curtis, you'll certainly remember this, broadband restrictions. The cable companies and others came up with a, with a, what was an awful bill, quite honestly, that would have, it would prevent municipalities from doing local broadband. And where this really started, the city of Chanute had a cable company that they wanted broadband fiber put in their community. They had several major businesses asking for it, because they needed more width to handle the data they needed. The cable company refused to do it. So, the city said, "All right, we'll build our own broadband network." And they did, and the cable company went nuts, and so the industry kind of came gunning for that. And it would have affected, the bill was introduced last year, would have also prevented us from having, if it had been in place, doing the Google deal. We wouldn't have been able to offer any kind of incentives, or, so it's a very restrictive bill. We think it may surface again. I'm just putting it on there to let you know that, that we will be opposing it if it, if it comes forward, so. So, that's my quick overview of, of some of our major issues. I'm sure there are questions, and then I'd, I'd let the mayor and all of you just, just kind of have discussion.
All right. Any questions for Mike, or, and/or just discussion generally about some of these issues?
Yeah, I would like to ask.
I would like you to talk about, Mr. Frownfelter, about your, yes, about your proposal, and how you really feel it's going.
I know.
Sorry, dear. Well, thank you. The bill we've, we're discussing has been working for about six, six, seven years. It's been through, like you said, it passed the House floor. We had it in conference committee, and met with a little stumble there, but it was a, to me, it was the least important of the two bills we needed, which got us Fairfax doing away with the levy down there, the demolition bit, and an addition rebate, but we needed to use other places. So, we dropped it off the conference committee for, for that. We're in a position, thanks to Mike and a couple other people, really Whitney Dammer now of Topeka, who helped put that, gather a good presentation in Topeka on our interim, that this bill can go through. Now, after meeting with the mayor the other day, I think we have a couple avenues of going. If this doesn't work, we have another avenue after, after looking at the bill itself, the statute, how it sets. But, we feel that, at this time, and I'll leave it to the, the minority leader a little bit with his help, I think this is a time period we can get it through. And Senator Petty, with the help of the senators also, will need their help over there in the senate, because that's where it got stalemate at. We passed the House floor with 10 floor, 10 votes, and it got blocked in a committee, local government committee, with a gentleman over there that believes in, you know, private, you know, privatized. I mean, he's, he's just a, his own private entity, and, and they don't realize that that inflicts on the private property rights, and one person reflects on a number of other people around the area. And that, so, but we've, we've tweaked it, we've, we've worked it. As we all know, we border, I'm not gonna mention a term, but we border something that they're really worried about. Ema domain is what they're worried about. How, how does this reflect that? How close are we bordered at? And we've got to be very careful that we don't step over that one little line, that it gets them too close to that. And that's the whole, the whole concept.
Right. And I was lucky enough to be at one of your roundtables.
Oh.
Down, yeah, at the Kansas League of Municipalities. And I was really excited to see how enthusiastic the small burgs were, the little rural areas. And do you feel like they actually have bothered to talk with any of their legislators yet?
No, I don't. I don't really have. I will tell you this, that the League of Municipalities put out a flyer, a questionnaire, that tried to get back at how many they thought. And there was a small town outside of Wichita, I think it's Ashburn.
Osborne, I think.
Ashburn. And they said they only had four. The mayor called the other day, they have 175. Now, this is a small population. 175 houses have been sitting vacant for over a year or two, so.
So, they don't even know.
They don't. I mean, this is something, with, after speaking with the governor, in the ROD Zone, the Rural Opportunity Zone, they wanna get businesses to those areas, the small communities out there, but it's like the chicken and egg. You can't do it, because there's no housing. But the housing's sitting there, we're allowing them the ability to use that to bring people to their community and do that, same as we have here in our community.
Thank you.
Well, and this bill dovetails nicely with the work that McCurnan and Markley have been doing with our housing stock. This bill is, would be a game changer for our community in terms of really moving us forward to be able to get a hold of these abandoned and delinquent properties. We're talking about abandoned properties. We're not talking about moving grandma out of her house. We're talking about properties that have been empty for a year or two, and they're a blight on the community, they're a hazard to the community. Getting our hands on those and getting them turned into positive use, that's a big, this bill's a big game changer. So, I, I appreciate your work on this. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for the update. And to follow up on, on the questions, or the clarification that Representative Brownfelter just get, can anyone cite that statute so that those listening can look it up and read it for themselves? Because that is a real concern among some of our constituents, that grandma, auntie, whomever, is not moved out of the house when the situation arises most often, that there's no one in the house.
That's right.
And nothing is being done to upgrade it, or to do something with it to diminish the blight. So, I think it's important that those watching can look up that number, can look up that statute and read it for themselves.
Stan might be able to recite it if you're, if you really wanted him to.
Please.
Word for word.
Uh, it's 1720, uh, excuse me, 121750 is where it starts. And it's talking about, when it starts out, it's unsafe and dangerous and abandoned. And 121750 is the definition. When you go through that first part of it, it's gonna be a definition page, like you're going through the dictionary, giving a definition. 17, uh, 121751 through self, 121756, we'll talk about the governing body and their ability to do some things. Where the biggest changes are gonna be is at 121756A to G. That's dealing with the non-for-profits, okay? And that's what we're talking about there, is the changes are in that, in that regards to it. Allowing non-for-profits to go in there and rehab these homes, and make it affordable housing, instead of opening it up to the public, which would, the cost would be outstanding on it. We've never, I'll, I'll give an example. In the old days, when Catholic housing was around, and they were doing the, the big homes over there in the, in the cathedral area, they had a big stock left over, because they couldn't sell what they did. The rehab was too costly, and they couldn't sell them for what they were into. These are houses that we can get into and work with the non-for-profits, save some money, and make affordable housing for those people to get into, those starter homes, realistically what I'm talking in my area, and other homes like that. Maybe the, the, the starter to the middle-class homes, if you understand what I'm saying. But if you can go through 121750 to 121756G, but when you're reading it, it is split up into two sections. There's two really statutes in, in one there, okay? And allow the governing body and then the non-for-profit.
And I might just, again, to, to stress this, because the concern about emin, what we're talking about are homes no one's living in, and we can't find the owners. The owners have walked away. We don't know who owns the house. We're not talking about taking a house that we know Stan Frownfelter owns. We're talking about taking a house that we can't find the owner, and no one's claiming that house, so it's just sitting there. And it happens more than you would think. One thing that tends to happen sometimes, our, our landlords will rent out a house until it can no longer pass the rental licensing requirements, and rather than fix it up, they just walk away from it. And then their rental buys it and starts all over again. And remember, when you start looking at these, you're not looking at people that live in Wyandotte County or Kansas City that own these homes. It's not even in our own state, some of them. 50% don't even live in our state. And a lot of them are mortgage companies outside the company. What I'm hoping comes from this, as we step up and hold people accountable, that we're not redoing all these houses, that we bring them to the table, and they start doing them. As soon as they see that we take a stand, that you can't step on us anymore. You can't use us. You can't just kick us to the side and think that we're irrelevant, that they'll have to come to the table and start negotiating with us and doing these houses themselves.
Thank you. One other question I had, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hear some more about the Urban Opportunity Zones. If those are created, will money come with those designations, or will that designation entitle those areas or zip codes to qualify for some other pool of money?
It's, from what we know about it right now, Commissioner, and again, we've not seen a formal proposal. The governor's floated some ideas, but it would allow, if someone moved in, for example, from out of state, back into one of these zip codes to live, they could have their income taxes waived for five years. There's the possibility of having student loans paid off, or at least in part. And this component, unlike the rural, would have a, a, a TIF sort of component, where if improvements are made, you could put that money, you know, the increment, back into infrastructure in that block or in that district. That doesn't exist in the rural zones. Those are the concepts that we've heard the governor talk about. And revenue, we haven't seen a formal bill or proposal yet, but that's the gist of it. The idea is to try to get, you know, maybe a, somebody who just graduated from dental school, come back to the state and maybe set up a storefront on Quandero, for example, or Minnesota, or, and then he would get some benefits for doing that. That's kind of, that's the concept of it. And the zip codes are, gosh, 66101, 102.
66106. Then there's one just going up farther north and farther north. I met with Secretary Nick Jordan of Revenue and Pat George of Commerce yesterday over the housing, seeing how it fit in well with this project they're doing. This is still in the works. This is not a bill yet that isn't brought forward. They're still working on it. It is a spinoff of the ROD, Rural Opportunity Zone, is what they're trying to do. I, I wanted to make sure, I was working with them, that we don't put a burden on local government, that we give away money that comes to us. Again, as we, you can see from the, up there, that we've done enough of that in the past. So, we'll make sure that the state is living up their half of it, or their portion of it, as we get into it. Okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to weigh in on the Medicaid expansion piece. Medicaid expansion is very important, as we know, Wyandotte County has 5% of the state's population, and 10% of the state's uninsured. And I've said this many times, but the Affordable Care Act can cut that number in half, and expansion of Medicaid would cut that number in half again. Through enroll Wyandotte, with the Health of Communities Wyandotte, the Health Department, the, the Wyandotte Health Council, we've put together a pretty strong coalition, and in the first year, enrolled a third of the people eligible under the Affordable Care Act in Wyandotte County. That's 4,500 people in Kansas City, Kansas, who now have insurance who didn't have it before. And we're doing a very aggressive rollout this year as well, trying to enroll the other, two-thirds of the people who are eligible. The expansion of Medicaid, though, is leaving a big gap, because there will be people actually with less income than people who qualified for the Affordable Care Act who still don't have insurance. So, the expansion of Medicaid really helps the very poor in our community have access to healthcare. So, that's an important component. I believe the number for Kansas is $3 billion a year that would come to the state for the expansion. It would go towards, obviously, providing the healthcare for the very poor. It would also go to the healthcare infrastructure of our state. It would be job creation. It would be helping, hiring more doctors and nurses. It would help, it also helps reimburse hospitals that are paying. The way that the federal government covers indigent care now has changed to the Affordable Care Act and the expansion of Medicaid. So, the last number I got from Bob Page at KU was $30 million a year that KU is losing in unreimbursed money, because Medicaid has not been expanded. So, imagine the amount of healthcare that KU could be putting back into our community if it were being reimbursed for that money. And any way that we can push that through economic development and jobs, helping the poor, helping the hospitals, it's really a win across the board. And usually, my argument is this, to my knowledge, Kansas still takes transportation money from the federal government. We still take education money from the federal government. Just, if we called it Obama culture, we wouldn't stop taking agricultural subsidies in Kansas, right? So, we've got to move past the politics of the Affordable Care Act and get into the dollars and cents of funding the basic services in the state of Kansas. So, this Medicaid expansion is very big for Wyandotte County, and frankly, for the whole state. And I think there's starting to be some synergy with the rural hospitals recognizing the loss of jobs and the, the potential of even closing without this money. So, this, if there's any help that we can get, or any way that we can help provide another voice for Medicaid expansion, I'd be glad to, to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your support here in Wyandotte County for that. You're exactly correct. Right now, 28 states, I think it is to date, have passed Medicaid expansion nationwide. And so, what we're, what, what is happening right now is we're gonna have two systems of healthcare in America, the states that have Medicaid expansion and the states that don't, and all those federal dollars that flow to help support that population. If we pass Medicaid expansion, 160,000 people in Kansas would be newly insured. And you're exactly on point when you talk about the economic development aspect of that. And I think that's what we need to talk about more and more, because you think about 160,000 people, and the, the doctors, the nurses, the ancillary care, the supplies that you need. That'd be a huge economic boon to Kansas, which we apparently desperately need right now. So, that's one thing. The other thing is that the Hospital Association realizes that, especially given the huge budget hole that Kansas finds itself in, and they probably have to step up the plate and help a little bit, because what you hear about generally are two things. We don't want to take federal dollars, and you already made the point on that. The other thing you hear about is, you know, I think it's 17, when we actually pay the 10% by the state. So, what the Hospital Association is proposing, and they're trying to get broad agreement on it, is that the hospitals, they already have something in place called an assessment tax, provider assessment, that we increase that on the hospitals. They would do this willingly, and they're, so they would essentially cover the majority of that 10%. So, really, the state would not, would not cost them as much when, when you're down to the 90% match. Now, how that works is, just, just to give you broad numbers, for, for example, let's say, KU Hospital had to pay in 15 million. We would hope that we would beat that number, so if we paid in 15 million to this assessment tax, for example, that we would get enough people covered with Medicaid that would cover that, and, and a little more, and do a little better on that. So, the whole idea, I think, is we can get broad agreement among hospitals, is get them to step up to the plate, agree to cover some of that match money. So, hopefully, that takes away some of the argument. I think it's gotta pass this year or next year, because I think we're gonna continue to see a wave of states passing Medicaid.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Kathy, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't that include the pharmaceutical discounts we get, which is closer to 70 to 90 million a year? If we don't bring that in, we could lose those discounts for our, for what we do with the Medicaid.
For, for the hospitals that, that.
Yes.
Get that program. That's exactly right.
So, we're not talking about just 30. We're talking about another 70, 90 million. We could lose in excess of that. So... We could lose in excess of that. So that's quite a little bit. And I would like, I don't know if this is the place to do it, but on your law enforcement mutual aid bill?
Yes.
I was asked, co-sponsored, I had a phone, a couple of phone calls. Since we have our two heads of law enforcement out here, could, is there any way we could ask them to chime in? Are they for, are they against it? Or, I mean, is that illegal?
No, we can absolutely do that.
I mean, until we do that. I was going to try to call on myself, but since I got them both in the same room, I'd sure like to do it.
We got a thumbs up from Sheriff Ash. You want to come, if you'd like to come forward and say a few words, you're welcome to.
He is deferring to me because he knows I've been really involved in trying to push this legislation forward. This is
Could you introduce yourself, please, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ellen Hansen. I am the interim police chief here in Lenexa, or I mean, in Kansas City. It's been a long day.
That's, that's the first time you've done that here in your year. That's the first time I've heard you say that.
I know. I know. I think it's because my time is coming to an end, so I know. But, and it's, it's been a great time. We, many, or several years ago, when Homeland Security money started becoming available, formed a consortium of the metro area disaster tactical officers. And what this was, was a group of officers that would come together if we had a natural, some type of act of terrorism, or anything where we needed to pull together tactical officers. And that has worked very, very well. The equipment comes, it belongs to the whole region. We don't fight over it. We share, we train together. It's been a really great thing. So out of that group came the idea for this legislation. Because just like the example that was given to you earlier about Ward Parkway, not everything is a big disaster or needs a lot of tactical response. But on almost any day, there could be a situation across the state line where a quick and immediate response from either side of the state line could really avert disaster, could bring an active shooter situation to a close quicker, could just be the thing that really does keep a bad situation from getting worse. So we see no downside to this whatsoever. We see so many opportunities. And actually, law enforcement in this metro area functions together in many, many ways on a, if not a weekly basis, certainly a monthly basis. All the chiefs and sheriffs meet every month. We talk about common problems. We review things that are on the horizon, different types of equipment, different types of programs, different legal issues. So this is a law, as was mentioned earlier, that was passed last year in Missouri. And in order for the Missouri law to really go into effect, we have to pass this on the Kansas side, because it is to serve both, both of those entities. One thing that a lot of people don't think about is how this will impact in a very positive way that whole issue of the Metro Squad. You all know the Metro Squad has worked and worked well for decades. However, it has worked on the premise that a Kansas officer will always be paired with a Missouri officer, so that we have authority, no matter where we go, on either side of the state line. And it's always kind of been a hope and a prayer. We cross our fingers. We tried to make that work. But as we all know, sometimes situations aren't perfect. There's not always one Kansas officer for one Missouri officer. So this would remove any type of ambiguity from that situation, which we think would be a great step forward. So the Metropolitan Chiefs and Sheriffs endorse this. The Johnson County Chiefs and Sheriffs endorse it. I won't speak for the sheriff, but he's been very positive and helpful in moving this forward, and as have the other law enforcement entities here in Wyandotte County, which is where I know I am now.
Thank you.
That's great.
Any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Chief. I'm Louis Varese. I represent 31st District. At what level of incident would you feel this be necessary?
Well, I think it's written in such a way that it certainly would not be routine. We're talking about an exigent situation. So if someone said, hey, we have a robbery over here and we need some help hunting down the robber, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an emergent situation where you need an infusion of law enforcement presence immediately. Active shooter situations, we all know that we've had, we've been very fortunate, we've had peaceful demonstrations here. But if we had some type of situation that occurred where we needed that help back and forth across the state line, the big advantage here is you, at this, with this legislation, you don't have to form a task force. You don't have to try to find the chief. You don't have to try to find the sheriff. You know, if it's a Sunday morning and he's in church, or something else, that the incident commander right there on the scene, who we have a lot of confidence in, will say, I need help, and they can initiate this action.
Thank you.
Welcome, Senator Petty.
Thanks. I'm sorry, I was late. The Senate Minority Democrats were having their caucus, which is in Topeka, but I did it by phone, so I'm glad I could join you here. I just want to follow up with Representative Varese's question. So as you look at this piece of legislation, are you seeing any, where do you see the cost would occur?
We don't really see any cost. We have a lot of mutual aid situations back and forth. So the way we've operated, if we would go over and assist Kansas City, Missouri, and if that would result in overtime for Kansas City, Kansas, we would absorb that overtime. Then when they come over and help us, they would absorb the overtime.
So any, but any incurred overtime would be a local cost, not a state cost?
Correct.
Thank you.
We also already have this procedure in place across county lines. Is that right? In the state of Kansas?
Right.
Johnson and Wyandotte County already cooperating this way? Is that right?
Yes.
And so this would just expand it. And Missouri counties cooperate on their side. It just allows us to go east-west and not just north-south.
And, you know, for those of you, our KCK constituency here, we know that we're seconds away. And we deal with a lot of people who go back and forth across that state line, you know, quite often. The potential for us to be able to get there quickly, to help them in a situation, and vice versa, when they really need the help, is great.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. The chief of Kansas City, Kansas?
One more thing I liked, Mike brought up, Taylor, about the sales tax exemptions. We're talking about $4 billion. Let me throw a couple of things in there. There is a lot of money. But remember, that includes double taxing the lottery. One of the things, when you tax things twice, we, if you eliminate that, so we don't double tax items, as if General Motors buys a part and they tax it, and then puts it into the car, and they tax it, and they sell it to us, they tax it. You don't want that taxed three times. We eliminate that, plus the lottery because of, because of the law ventured outside of states, we're still at almost 1.5, 1.6 billion dollars, which is a lot of money that we have in sales tax exemption to use elsewhere that could be utilized down the road. I just didn't want to think that we had $4 billion sitting around there we're spending, but it is a large amount at 1.5 to 1.6. And it's been growing every year at about 10 to 15%, so.
Right. It's, it's been discussed in past years. The problem is, politically, it's very charged. I mean, it's everything from Girl Scout cookies to boys' clubs and baseball leagues.
Churches.
Churches. And the biggest one
Yeah, I'm against that.
The biggest one, that would probably be the biggest fight, where there's a lot of money there, is, is on professional services. Attorneys, dentists, architects. There's no sales tax on those services. And one of the proposals that came out a couple of years ago to do this included that. And I tell you, it got a very fierce reaction. So I just raise it as a possibility, because if we're looking for money, it's where there is a large area of money. I'm not sure the political will is there to actually take it on and eliminate all these exemptions. But I wanted to bring it up as a, as a possible
And you are right about services, but that's not a sales tax exemption. They've never been put into that category yet. So it's, it's off to the side. That's not part of the
Right. It's not in the list of exemptions, but it
But you got, then they're over here where they never have been put into that sales tax exemption. So they're still not paying tax on their service. So that would add on to that 1.6 million, which would add enough in a lot.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to comment on the tax system. A personal note, maybe not something that the entire commission has talked about, but I, I have noticed that there's been a little bit of talk lately that the sales, or the tax cuts that were enacted might be revisited. One that I'm pretty familiar with, that I think must have been an unintended consequence, perhaps, but it's the elimination of income tax on pass-through income derived from an LLC. And where a lot of this hits people is that self-employed people working out of their house often incorporate as an LLC, and suddenly, they don't have to pay state taxes. And that's not only unfair, but it's ineffective if the purpose of the sales, or of the tax is to create employment, which is what the stated goal was. These are, a lot of these people have absolutely no intention of ever hiring anyone. They're, they're self-employed. And, and they want to be self-employed, and they don't want to have, they don't want to have employees. But it was all just rolled into this grand elimination of state income tax. So I just bring that to your attention. I think it's unfair. And I, I think you could probably have dozens of people who would provide testimony that they no longer have to pay sales tax, and they think it's unfair, even though they're the beneficiaries, if you choose to have hearings on something like that. So I just bring that up. It's something that I think could be reviewed if, if truly the, the overall tax program is going to be reconsidered.
It was 191,000 businesses, sole proprietorships, LLCs in Kansas were exempted from paying income tax. And it was not unintentional. It was very deliberately done.
And also, it, only on the profits. And now, and, and I'm going to, I think Kathy was your first, we dealt with that, your first time there. Oh, yeah. I was, unfortunately, on that tax committee when that went down. And what, the question I asked was, I make a hundred, I'm a, I'm a Subchapter S, sole proprietor LLC. I make 120,000 a year. I pay taxes on that. At the end of the year, when we, as you do the, your taxes, you roll it in, your profits in the one, you don't pay taxes on that. I said, okay. My next question is, I pay myself 30,000 a year, and I make 210,000, and I pay it quarterly. You don't pay taxes on that. And what we've seen happen is, with the influx of jobs, job growth in Kansas is, we never put a, we never watch it close enough. No, is that, is that people changing from a C corp to an LLC? So Subchapter S or sole proprietor? I mean, the job growth in Kansas could be done through these taxing, if that's the way they're looking at. We've never done that. So that's another reason I think it was done. No, we lost a lot. We did the, that, we either did that, or the sales tax, I mean, the income tax reduction for everyone. But doing both of them is what's put us in this jam right now.
Well, and I think the key to this is, when we give incentives out at the local level, we give incentives out to leverage another investment. So when we partner with a grocery store, we get, we put certain incentives from the sales tax and property tax of future growth on that in order to leverage the private investment. I don't have a problem, if you're going to set up a program to encourage people to hire new people, to do a rebate system, that if you hire another person and another full-time equivalent will rebate your, some of your income tax, all or some of your income tax. But when it's not tied to an incentive, we're just giving people money who, like you said, don't necessarily need it. And so I don't, I don't believe in just giving money away. I mean, I wouldn't, my kids, I don't even give my kids money without at least some idea of what they say they're going to spend it on. So why would we just give people money when they haven't hired anybody? But if you hire somebody, we should give you a rebate and say, thanks for hiring somebody. You're helping put Kansas to work. So making it a rebate, rather than a de facto, here's free money, I think that's where the problem is. Because it, there's no evidence to show that it has led to more people being hired.
Mayor?
So I'm an S corp, you know, small, you know, small business S corp. There's a lot
of doctors that are small business S corps. And I don't mind paying my taxes. And, and so, yeah, woo, they saved me a little bit of money. I'd rather pay those taxes in and take care of what we're supposed to be taking care of in our community than guessing, as the mayor says, that we're going to bring more people in to our state, as you say, which we have not seen from that particular item. So I'm, I stand on record, I don't mind paying my taxes. I just want to make sure that we don't assume because it's an LLC or something, it's only a little garage business. Okay?
And, and clearly, the evidence is in, is so far, to date at least, it hasn't worked. Kansas is not keeping pace with the states around them in job growth. We're not keeping pace with the nation. And so clearly, it's not working. In fact, we've lost industrial jobs and we've gained service jobs. So service jobs generally means restaurants and fast food and that sort of thing. So the jobs that we are showing an increase in probably aren't necessarily the type of jobs that they had imagined when they implemented this grand tax plan.
All right. Anything else? The city elections, that's the last item on here. Do we want a four-page ballot? I think keeping the city elections nonpartisan and in the spring, and not overshadowed by the federal and state elections is pretty important. It's hard enough to get people's attention in the spring. I would imagine if we're competing with national television ads and state ads and senator ads and governor ads, the chances of getting our message out about what's good for Kansas City, Kansas, is going to be very small. And then we also open up the cities to the winds of, the federal winds of throw the bums out. And about every four or six years, whoever the bums are that year, whether it's the Democrats or the Republicans, get thrown out. And then everybody down ballot gets thrown out with them. And so what you do is you set up this national wave of whatever's popular coming in to impact the local elections. It seems like keeping it under the, under the federal radar would be a lot better, and any way that we can emphasize the desire to keep them nonpartisan. Filling potholes and flushing toilets is a nonpartisan issue at the end of the day. And we spend a lot of money filling potholes, a lot of money on sewers, police and fire protection. Nobody cares if you're Democrat or Republican. They want to know you're going to fund basic services for the community. And I think we need to maintain that push for, for the local, and particularly for the school boards. And, you know, school boards, everybody. I think we need to keep it nonpartisan. I don't know if anybody, does, anybody disagrees with that?
Well, I don't disagree with you. I, I do think it probably
Did any of our delegations serve on the interim?
Standing.
So fortunately, so fortunately, it, a recommendation for a bill didn't come out of the interim. That doesn't mean it's not going to be on, on the floor.
We had an opportunity to visit with, with a number of the mayors, and to a fault, almost 100% of the mayors are opposed to the fall elections. And the, the significant part of that is their legislative delegation is not listening to them. And the support here from this delegation stands with its local government on that issue. The, if you will, the sensationalism associated behind this is about efficiencies. The 8% turnout that happens on a local election. And so they're going to drive that home, that it's inefficient to have fall elections, and we would be, or inefficient to have spring elections. It's more efficient to have the fall elections along with the state and federal process, so that you'll get a higher turnout. Those of us who've been around a while, this is nothing more than a, than an attempt to continue to divide this state, to make it Rs. and Ds. versus Kansas. And it's just poor policy. It's a, an attempt to take control of local control. And there are those in the legislature that believe that you should have local control as long as they're controlling you locally. And so we just need to be mindful that this legislation is going to come out of committee. We'll probably have that discussion on the floor. Where it goes out of the House and/or the Senate will, will be tested in time throughout this session, as a number of these issues will be. But rest assured that this delegation is standing ready to defend local control to the best of our ability.
I would add, I'm sorry. One quick idea that has come out of some of the meetings is if, if your issue is really to increase voter turnout, allow mail ballot elections in the spring for the candidates. We can do that now on bond issues and special questions, but not on candidates. And so a number of states And so, a number of states that presented, said they saw significant increases in their local elections, when they allowed the entire election to be conducted by mail ballot. We already did advanced voting by mail ballot, and, and plus, there's an issue of cost, if you want a true cost savings, that really does save money, because you're not having to get poll workers, move the machines and all that. So, I'm just putting that out, that there's starting to be more and more discussion, as that may surface as an alternative to moving them to the fall.
And we in the legislature might have a comfort level with that, if we have a Secretary of State that does, Secretary of State's responsibilities associated to elections.
Amen. I'll amen that. Margie, and then Phil Burton.
Commissioner Phil, give you your comment in regard to the elections?
Yeah.
Then can you go first?
Sure. Yeah. My comment definitely has to do with the elections, spring versus fall. We may get a, a lower turnout in the spring, but those that actually get out and vote, they have feelings for what they really want, and they're voting. So I'm not gonna say that just because we have fewer, that our people are not talking to us. We just need to try to build a fire more under them, and to try to get them out. That's easier said than done, but, on the other hand, as elected officials, I guess it's our job to try to remind them that if they want us to stay in, they'll get out and vote, or if they wanna get rid of us, they have to get out and vote. And so, I just, you know, the argument that because there's more people come out, in one time or another, doesn't mean the quality of people that come out are any better, one way or the other.
I'll just add on to, since you're not, go ahead. I thought it was interesting, when some of us were at the mayor's dinner, the Council of Mayors Dinner, and for Johnson and Wyandotte County, and Chairman Ayler said that in this last election, that in his election, which was not at the top of the ballot, there were 18,000 less votes in his election. So I think that's also, you know, a factor, that if you look at a ballot that now has 35 people on it, what a difference it'll make on who's actually, whether you're actually getting any votes or not.
Commissioner Margie.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm gonna shift gears just a little bit. I just have really some comments to make, and really, it's just to maybe begin discussions with my fellow commissioners, and to also just maybe provide some input to our state legislature. The first one is, I absolutely agree with you on Medicaid expansion. I, I just see gloom and doom if that doesn't happen. But it's sort of my nature and my personality to hope for the best, and plan for the worst. So on a more positive side of that, if it doesn't happen, if Medicaid expansion doesn't happen, one of the things that I am learning more and more by serving on the Kansas Board of Regents, is I'm learning more about our KU hospital, and our educational system. And if you don't know, you should be aware, that not only our state, but the country is desperate for medical personnel like doctors and nurses. We are literally desperate nationally, and Kansas is no exception to that. And so, if Medicaid expansion does not occur, it's just as the mayor and Representative Wolf said, it is, many of our rural hospitals and places like that will be closed. So right now, as of yesterday, I just received a large presentation from Bob Page from the hospital, and Dr. Girard, who's the Executive Vice Chancellor for the Medical Center, who stated that the hospital will be actively seeking, and Kathy, you can probably agree with this, they'll be actively seeking revenue generating opportunities, so they're very much shifting to a very business model. I do think, it's a little disappointing, but I get why it's happening, and I totally understand, and I'm supportive of that, and I do think that if we start looking at it like that, there might be some opportunities for local government to develop a better relationship with our, for example, KU hospital. So it's really just a comment in regard to that. On the second comment I had, was on the urban opportunity zone. First of all, Stan, I can't appreciate enough the work you're doing on the Abandoned Housing Act. I think you've worked very hard on that, and I greatly appreciate it. And I think you will be surprised at how well you will do, the more you reach out to the rural areas of Kansas. I've had a lot of interaction with cities like Garden City, areas in southwest Kansas like Pittsburgh, Kansas, and just by the press mini-presentation that you give, where you talked about the one small town where the representative from that area thought there was one home, or two homes in the whole city that might benefit from this, and then you had to call the mayor, and he tells you there's 100 in the area. Just maybe as a suggestion, really, is that when you do have people come and testify, that you solicit input from those local municipalities, to come up and testify about the impact that something like this might have on those areas, 'cause then clearly, the burden can't fall on your shoulders to necessarily collect all of that data. I had one other comment here. Okay, and also in regard to the urban opportunity zones, I do have just a suggestion, again, I haven't discussed this really with my fellow commissioners, or our state legislature, but, and there may be things wrong with this, but I'm gonna throw it out there for people to think about, and that's that, I would like to see a piece added to this opportunity zone, where there's actual capital available. In particular, when you're dealing with more challenged areas, you have all these challenges like abandoned housing, and frankly, though I greatly appreciate Representative Fromm Felter's work, there is a process involved in, in acquiring that property, which sometimes delays progress. And so sometimes, just having access to capital, and acquiring it the old-fashioned way of just buying it, is a whole lot easier and faster and more impactful than having to go through a process. So, I would be grateful for anyone that would be willing to look into with me, the opportunity of adding an amendment to the opportunity zones, that enables those areas that engage in economic development, that, and job creation, are able to capture some of that new employment tax locally, for ongoing economic development in those zip codes. So, it doesn't take money away from any existing program, it doesn't compete with one another, it is mutually beneficial. It, I would think, it would be very popular with Republicans, because in, I sort of from that mindset, it's about earning your money. So if you bring the jobs, for example, if, if Gil, in Gil's district's grocery store is built, and it creates 150 new jobs, and we're able to keep some of that employment tax from those new employees, it doesn't take anything away from anywhere else, there wasn't a store there to begin with, it doesn't take away from beating the homeless, or doing those other programs, it's new money that's generated. And we earned it if we recruited the store to the area. So, that's just my suggestion on urban opportunity zones, I'll continue to work that, as much as I can from the local level. And that's it.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanna revisit a few of these issues, and share with you some of the challenges I believe you all know that are coming, and we will do our best to address those. Your highway projects, your T-Works projects, are gonna be at risk here in two years. The, the present funding level is secure for next two years. However, your, your local investment is going to need to increase, in order to see these projects through to fruition. Those are some of the challenges you're gonna face on the local level. There will be a bill introduced, I anticipate, I don't know if it'll be a rescission bill, or if it'll be a, just a bill to acknowledge the fact that we haven't paid our fair share back to you on local revenue sharing, ad valorem, and to eliminate it completely, so it's no longer a statute, and they'll take that as a savings, and as a hollow budget piece to say that we saved this money. Well, in reality, they haven't been paying it anyway. I anticipate the formula for education to be looked at, which will impact Wyandotte County tremendously, and affect our very children in this community, and those rural and urban communities that are challenged already, to ensure that our children have a fair opportunity for an education. These are the type of things that we're dealing with, and had it not been for the reorganization of KU, the insightful reorganization of KU Hospital and Medical Center years ago, chances are, it would be on the chopping blocks today, and possibly even be closed. So we're, we should be very protective of those resources that we presently have. These are some of the things that happen when people say they wanna downsize government, they wanna right-size government, and they wanna privatize government. The unfortunate side of that is, it's okay to do that, as long as it doesn't affect you. And when you need it, and demand it, and you can't get it, that's when it hits home. So I respect the fact that you all are dealing with a financial issue here at home, and I just wanna say personally, as a citizen of Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County, how much I appreciate this local government being able to hold its, hold the line on the mill levy, in reference to the cuts that you have faced. I think that sends a very strong message to this community, that you hear the message, and we want to help with that. And our part is not to allow the state to continue to renege on the commitments it makes to local government. So, Governor, I just wanna say, I compliment you and the commission on holding the line on our residents, and allowing those housing opportunities to advance.
Congratulations.
Oh, did I say governor? Oh, I apologize. I didn't mean to.
I'm the governor of Lenexa.
I didn't mean to demote you, Mayor. It's, it's, in all seriousness, I think the community stands, stands to gain by the leadership that this community's demonstrated, and we are all thankful for that. So, if I may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words, Commissioner, and, and one of the things I did bring up yesterday at our meetings with Secretary of Revenue and Commerce, was maybe extending that zip code into that area, because I know that there's a lot in works, and that could be a big, big, if we include that in our urban core development, that could be a big incentive, there could be dollars there to help create more revenue, and expand that. And on, as far as the testimony from these areas, we've asked for written testimony from each area that was there, to whereas we can take it like, let's say, Osburn, he, the mayor sent one in. I would put that in a file, for each person on the committee in their area, wherever they are from, to make sure they understand your local governments want this. We've done that. And as far as the last one, the Angel Tax Credit, I don't know if we did away with that, but that was a big incentive over the years, and we can revisit that, but I think because of funding, because of funding, we cut that down, but we did away with it, haven't we?
We still have it.
But it's, it's, it's gone down the middle, but that was a big one for us, which we could use to bring outside, businesses from outside our own state in here, people with revenues, to help support, to develop the entities.
So just one follow-up question to Representative Fromm Felter. It's my understanding they have made the change to include 66103, is that not accurate?
I don't know. I saw the first version of it, and it was three, it went 66106, above, then over, up northeast, I don't know if it's in there.
I think that was a mistake, but I, I'm pretty sure that 66103 has been included in that legislation.
Well, we discussed that, I discussed it with them yesterday, to make sure, trying to make sure that we do.
Thank you, thank you.
Representative Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. And following along with Representative Burrows' issues with, we're losing on Medicaid expansion, a lot of money on the table with that, billions of dollars. Went through the House last year, and through the Senate, the Kansas Health Compact, which allowed the state of Kansas to opt out of the ACA, if the Senate, the United States Senate was a majority Republican to vote this through, didn't, does not need the signature of the President. We're looking to that, it's going to happen probably, with a vote coming through this next year, probably early. So what happens is, the federal funds that come in for the ACA will come in as a block grant. Now, I asked at the mic if that, if those funds are going to be used in any diverted way, and the gentleman who drafted the bill stated that it would be strictly used for healthcare. Well, based on what we're seeing now, at the state level, on, on funds being redirected, I beg to differ. So what I did, and I, in discussion with several of my colleagues, and Representative Burrows, introduced a bill to repeal the Kansas Compact, reintroduced it, so we'll see what happens at the beginning of the year. Second thing is that, I read in the Kansas Hispanic News, and have heard several places, where you're trying to look at the hiring practices of our two big city employers, KC KPD, and also the Fire Department, for equalization, or bringing in more minority employees in those two respective departments. And I want to applaud the commission's efforts, along those lines, anything I can do to help support those initiatives. Feel free to let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, yeah, go ahead.
Since I was a part of the Senate caucus today, one piece of legislation that is gonna be introduced by Senator Lita Fasca, is, and, and others, is dealing with a reduction of sales tax on fruits and vegetables, so it wouldn't be a total, probably wouldn't be a complete takeaway of a, of sales tax, but this whole, you know, we've got a whole move about, we're one of, there are so many states that don't tax foods, and, so this would be a move in that direction. So you might wanna think about that, and how this would affect, you know, our community, and whether it's something that you see as being needed, but it would start, at least it would be a starting point to talk about healthy foods, and fruits and vegetables. There's also mentioned that possibly one would be introduced dealing with foods sold at farmers markets.
Thank you. Well, on that note, a fruitful conversation, all the way around. The last item before we, before we adjourn tonight, that I just wanna check in first, I wanna thank Mike Taylor, and I think we give, we owe him a lot on both sides of the, whether it's state delegation, or the UG, we really appreciate all of your work on our behalf, and I think we should give him a hand.
Especially since he almost got thrown in jail last year.
The last item is simply moving forward. There, I think this, certainly this annual dialogue, as we're preparing our legislative agenda, to meet together and to go over it piece by piece, and kind of learn about it from one another, I think is very helpful. Certainly would anticipate doing this on an annual basis. The question is, I know that there have been attempts in the past to have luncheons in Topeka during the legislative session, is that something that the commission would be interested in traveling to Topeka, I don't know, once during the legislative session, or would it be better during your break time in April to meet here? But just wanna say, is there an, an interest during the session to get together as the session is happening, and I'm just open to feedback. What I don't wanna do is meet unnecessarily. I don't wanna just fill our calendars with meetings for the sake of meeting. We might be able to do that conversation one-on-one as needed, but if there is a need, I certainly wanna facilitate that in any way that we can. So is there, if there are any thoughts about that, I throw it out.
Can I just make a quick statement here? Being as how we're going to have a new chair of the delegation, first of the year, I think that discussion should take place, and maybe we can decide and get back with this commission regarding that issue.
That's great.
What happens many times is that, as you get a little farther into the session, we'll have many of these luncheons scheduled, and then they have to be canceled, 'cause we work through them, that happens so much. What I think would be especially helpful is, in addition to maybe meeting on the break, is that you've been willing to come up and testify on various issues. This, this, in particular, this moving the elections is gonna steamroll its way through, and our only hope of stopping it, there's not a local government that we found, I think as Mike said, or a school board that's for this. And so the only way that's gonna be stopped is with your presence, and your brethren's presence from across the state. So, I would love it if when you all came to Topeka, we could really use you in a real helpful capacity.
I would offer myself, and I, if there's someone else that feels passionately about these issues, if, if I could be of help testifying in front of a committee, I would do it. If, if I would, if having another Democrat from Wyandotte County testifying would not help the cause, then I wouldn't. But I would trust your judgment, if you feel like we can be useful, certainly communicate, and we'd be glad to bring some voices to the table to, on some of these issues.
Logistics. How, how much of a heads up can we get? You know, like to know?
Ten, fifteen minutes.
Oh, cute.
Less than 24 hours.
I can't, yes, I've been accused of driving very quickly, and, but, I don't wanna get a ticket. So, I mean, really, from the time they set up, you know, a hearing or whatever, about how much lead time do you usually have?
Generally, we find out, I go to a meeting every Thursday, and generally, I see the calendar of hearings for the coming, for the, the next week. So sometimes there'll be a hearing on Monday, sometimes it might be later in the week. Sometimes we're involved in helping kind of plan when that hearing will be. Other times, depending on the issue in the committee, they'll announce a hearing at five o'clock on Monday night, for 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday morning. Oh, and by the way, you have to have your written testimony 24 hours in advance. That's happened to me before.
Okay.
So, figure out how that works. So, it, it just kind of varies, but...
So it, it just kind of varies, but generally if there's a big hearing, a lot of times the league municipalities will try to put out a call and orchestrate that. Or I certainly know on Thursdays of a week what, what the main hearings are for the next week. So, and, and I think, and I think Representative Wolfmore's idea is good. I think though, on sort of the more routine things, I'm there, I can do that testimony. It's on the really important issues. I mean, I think it's sort of save the ammunition and bring a mayor or a commissioner up when it really, really will count.
But Mike, I just wanted to wondering, particularly like this elections issue, we know this is going to come up right away. We know, as Kathy said, it's going to be steamrolled. I mean, and it's not easy for you guys to come up on a regular basis, but you could already have that testimony ready, so.
Well, that's actually, that's true. And I've had testimony, you know, actually one of the most effective conferees on that issue a couple of years ago was our own elections commissioner. And he came up and I brought him up and he testified and, and he gave very logistical, factual kind of reasons why ballots this long won't work. I mean, it wasn't political, it was, he somebody said, here's why this can't work. Our voting machines can't handle it. It was very effective testimony because it was an expert who does that. But you're right, and I'm glad to help prepare testimony for any of you that wanted to do that.
So individual testimonies to be read, is that what you're saying?
It can be turned in written or it can, it can be, you can sign up and actually stand up at a podium and deliver it. I can get you more information on how that, that process works.
Okay. Well, if you're, if we are going to jump, jump on our wagons and, and rally, we need to know, you know, a little bit more about the rally.
I would ask, I'm sure Commissioner Markley, Margie and my friend to my right, what's his name, would like for me to lose their phone number, their cell number. But there are times where in session, there's an amendment that comes across, it might be directly affect somebody's commission area or Wyandotte County. Being able to have your number to call you and relate that and get input from it, even though Mike's there, would means a lot. Now, I have abused Brian's phone number over the past few years, but I apologize for that. But I mean, it's something that's necessary because all of a sudden, there's a bill that comes across, you don't think anything of it, now amendment's on it, and you're saying, wait a minute, that's going to affect someone. I, and I have no knowledge of what's going on and it might be the time Mike's or he's not or I can't, you know, he hides from me too. So we might need to get ahold of someone. And those are sometimes needed and I've talked to the mayor about that and I think that would get us more in contact and that with what we're doing. Thank you.
I'll be more than happy to give you the minority leader's phone number if you want to write it down so that you can call and see what bills may be coming up. I would caution you though, when you see on the calendar where it says meeting on call of chairman, they've been using that at times to not give heads up as to what bills are coming forward and then do just what Mike had stated they'll do. So we're going to see what we can do about dressing that in the rules and make, make that an issue because it's, it's only fair that the public have a chance to come in and voice their concerns. And when we hear in committee that no one stood in opposition, we have to question, well, was there even an opportunity for the opposition? So we'll watch that. My phone number, the office of the minority leader, 785-296-7630. And it's staffed, administrative secretary's name is Jan King. She will do whatever she can to get you the information and connect you with the resources you need to answer your questions, so.
All right. I would make a pitch too. One of the things that the commission can do to help further these issues is getting involved in the League of Kansas Municipalities and the Kansas Association of Counties. And I'm sympathetic to everyone having a job and trying to serve the larger community, but these issues continually are important to us. And if there is a way that you can serve with the League of Kansas Municipalities or the Kansas Association of Counties, that would be a big help. They are good advocacy groups and they do get information out. So if that's of interest to any of the commissioners, let me know and I'll want to get you plugged into that. So, all right. Anything else before we close? I want to thank everyone for tonight. Look forward to continuing the dialogue and I feel like we're off to a great start. So good luck in Topeka.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Can't forget that.